And time to open the February 23rd, 2022 edition of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Um, taking role by viewing, I believe all the commissioners are present with the exception of Mr. Graff.
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
We'll move on to the minutes as everybody had a chance to review the draft minutes from February 9th. Are there any questions, changes, or additions?
No.
None being heard will approve those minutes. Uh, Mr. Meesmer, is there any new correspondence not related to the issues on the agenda tonight?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. Um, I would like to mention to the commissioners that it's very likely we will have um some back-to-back Wednesday meetings in March and April. We have sometime-sensitive legislative activities that we need to complete within 60 days. And uh, so we'll let you know um as soon as those dates are determined. Otherwise, no other correspondence other than that related to, related to those items on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. I need to add one um additional housekeeping item to the agenda which we can conclude before we start new business. According to the Planning Commission procedures, based on Resolution 13-01, we were required to uh hold an annual vote at the first meeting in January to select, through a selected chair, and none of us apparently remember to do that. So I'm um think we should uh resolve that now. Are there in, is there anybody interested in serving as chair? You can self-nominate or nominate another person.
Would you consider continuing on?
I would.
I so nominate you.
Okay.
Um, can we hear the ayes on that?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, then I nominate Ms. Ruthr to be the Vice Chair, continuing her role.
Second that motion.
As long as you don't go on vacation too much, Bor.
I won't tell you about that till later. Shall we hear our voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair, um, let's proceed to new business.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the uh elections of the new Chair and Vice Chair. Well done. Uh, so this evening uh for new business, we're looking at a section of the code, Table 19.41.050, which basically identifies permitted uses in various zones. Um, the concern we have this evening is self-service storage as a permitted use in the commercial use zone. I do have a few slides that I would like to share my screen and go through a presentation with you.
Thank you, Mr. Meesmer. Proceed.
Okay, hopefully you can see my screen.
Mm-hmm.
So again, self-service storage facilities in the commercial use zone. Currently, self-service storage facilities are listed under Table 1941050 as a permitted use. Um, and the, the interesting point about this is that as we move forward, you'll see that self-service storage facilities, I'm sure you're all aware of, they are not a very active use, they're, they're really benign. Folks bring their, their, their belongings in, put them in the storage unit, go away. We don't have folks shopping, we don't have an office atmosphere, it's just a storage building. Uh, self-service storage standards, I've got the, it's a self-service storage category. The facilities providing separate storage areas for personal or business uses designed to allow private access by the tenant for storing or removing personal property. And search service categories include uh self-service warehouse, and they must be fully enclosed indoor multi-story building uh if it's in the commercial district. It also includes very mini warehouse. And so, and again, those standards are limited to fully enclosed indoor facilities in the commercial use zone. So all storage units are only accessible from indoors, and they also would have to meet various standards for block frontage with uh transparency, uh coverings over the um entry doors, things like that. So there, basically, there is no maximum size of building for self-storage facilities. You can see here in the commercial use zone, there is no maximum size, and some of the other zones, there's up to two, 200,000 square feet before you would go to uh a conditional use permit. So that's rather concerning in that someone could build a basic mini storage building that's over 100,000 square feet in the commercial use zone. So this slide basically shows, um, you'll see, it's a little small down there, sorry about that, but you can see where it's redlined and strike-through under self-service storage facilities. So staff proposes to eliminate the self-service storage facilities as a permitted use in the commercial use zone. And uh we've drafted a date and ordinance to that effect that would go to City Council after the planning commission meeting. So the commercial use zones are shown here, and I don't know if you can see my pointer or not here. But basically, the self-service storage is the commercial use zone in green here, and then on the map to your right in green is well out by Sharps Corner. So those, that's the commercial use zone map. That would be where staff proposes to eliminate the um allowance of having those self-service storage facilities. There is a self-service storage facility out on Sharps Corner. Um, that facility can stay, they can maintain it, they can fix it up whenever they need to, but it would not allow for any future self-service storage facilities to be constructed in that area at Sharps Corner. The, the rest of uh the areas where they're permitted is the LM1 use zone and the commercial marine zone. I did not put together a map on that, my apologies, but where you see all of the self-service storage facilities um in, along the, along Highway 20 on South March Point Road and Stevenson Road, those will still be allowed without any issues. So with that, um, we did receive two comments related to this proposal. Uh, both of those are in favor of dropping self-service storage facilities uh as a permitted use in the commercial use zone. Uh, with that, this is a public hearing, it's been duly advertised, and uh the Chair would like to open the meeting and request comments, that would be great, or if you have any comments to me or questions, please feel free to ask.
Um, let's ask first if the commissioners have any clarifications or questions. Mr. Juretsky.
Well, a couple of questions. Uh, is, is this the same as the units out by Jerry Smith Chevrolet where the units are sold or condominiumized and sold? So they're, they're owner-occupied versus rented spaces? Is there any difference in designation?
Uh, there is a difference, yes. So this is basically mini storage. Um, those are, as you mentioned, condominiumized and sold separately and owned by the, by an owner individually.
And those would still be acceptable?
Uh, those will still be acceptable out there, yes.
Okay. Um, are there any that are permitted right now that, that are about to be started or built, or?
Not in the commercial use zone, no.
Okay.
Curtis?
Thanks. I had a question, and this may predate my time on the commission, so uh please forgive me, but um what precipitated this uh review from uh the commission? Was there a, a permit submitted, or was there a guess that a permit was going to be submitted? I guess I'm kind of just curious in the background of what precipitated this review? And I'll have, I may have a wrong question.
Sure. Uh, so the City Council was, was approached by a few different people in regards to uh the potential of a large mini storage building in the commercial use zone and the impacts of that on the commercial use zone. And so the council adopted a moratorium to prevent that from happening until the Planning Commission could have an opportunity to um review this and make a recommendation to the City Council.
Good. So just to make sure that I understand it, so they're currently not prohibited as the code is written. The action before us is whether or not to make the recommendation that they would be prohibited, and this is on the heels of somebody indicating interest in building one?
That's correct.
Okay, so just, does uh, does City Council, or not City Council, but does uh the City Attorney, has everybody, all, everybody from the legal side has weighed in, like this isn't seen as pulling the rug out from under somebody?
No, it's not. There hasn't been any applications, there were a couple of uh inquiries, and uh again, City Council were approached by several members of the community um regarding what they felt would be huge impacts. And if you think about this, uh, imagine somebody building a 150,000 square foot mini storage right on Commercial Avenue.
I, I don't disagree with your assessment, I was just curious about the sequencing of it, making sure that the city was on, was on firm footing.
Yes, absolutely.
And if I, if I may offer a little pers, little uh context, we went through a very large revision of the land use and planning codes, and over a two-year period with a number of hearings, and in spite of that, were pretty well-prepared to do fine-tuning as issues came up or, or information came to our attention about any gaps or, or, or things that might have gotten missed along the way. So it's, I think this may not be the last time we revisit the code.
Thank you.
Ms. Ruthr?
Um, yeah, just from my experience of having worked as a planner, um, I worked in Woodinville, and they were bas, Woodinville was basically a strip mall that, um, you know, that became incorporated. And uh when we did our downtown plan, there were a lot, the zoning code really was something that we had to go through, because the zoning code wasn't built to create a downtown. The zoning code was built for suburbia, and Woodinville wanted to be something different. So I wasn't here during, you know, your visioning, but um I will have to say that there's, you know, it, it seems like something that doesn't matter, but it really is something. So I was gonna, I was gonna just make the comment that if we were gonna look at housing again, it might be a good time to look at that in correlation with um zoning. Because, you know, I can say these facilities don't even have a person monitor, you know, manning them anymore, and I don't blame them, but you know, do you want a business that has no people around? Does that sound like a safe thing to have next to your house? No. So um, anyway, I, I totally agree, this is not, this is not what I would want my downtown commercial area to look like in the future, it makes sense, but having been through kind of some downtown planning, zoning is something that maybe, maybe needs to be talked about in combination with how, how we see housing developing downtown.
Thank you.
From both safety and youth perspective.
And Mr. Mullino, any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Meesmer, uh, I'm trying to understand the distinction, uh, 100,000 square foot facility, I'm just making the numbers up, uh, with 50 condominium storage units versus 50 rental, uh, the impacts would be about the same, so why aren't both condominiumized and rentals not being excluded at this time?
So currently, the condominiumized style that um Mr. Juretsky spoke about are not permitted in the commercial use zone. Those are only permitted out in the LM1 and the CM use zone.
In the CM1, okay. I, I didn't catch that in the code, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Mr. Juretsky.
Then uh, I guess that for that, that comment, uh, Mr. Meesmer, uh, would rental units be allowed out there where the uh, the condominium, condominiumized ones are being currently built out there by the Chevrolet dealership?
Yes, they are, they would and are.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions? Now we'll uh open the public hearing. We are in receipt of, I believe, two uh written, written documents with the input, which we've had a chance to review. Uh, are there any members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
Mr. Chair, there are no people in attendance in the, from the public.
Thank you. Uh, in that case, we will close the public meeting and proceed to any further discussion um and/or motion. Anyone have any thoughts?
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chair?
Um, and unless people want to uh weigh in with a little more opinion, I certainly would entertain a motion.
Well, I'll, I'll move uh, uh, move the amendment to the City Council, amending MC, uh, AMC, God, I can't even get that out tonight, uh, 1941.050 table, uh, to the council, uh, eliminating self-storage facilities as a permitted use.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Um, let's see, we'll go to the vote. Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Graff? Absent. Mr. Juretsky?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Mullino?
Yes.
Ms. Ruthr?
Yeah.
The Chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Um, our next order of business is to review old business and conduct the Shoreline Master Program periodic update, further discussion. Are there any, uh, is there any presentation material from city staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, yes, yes, there is, and I'm trying to share my screen right now.
We've got it, thank you, Ms. Grage.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Um, it is my pleasure to be here again with the Planning Commission to talk about our periodic update of the Shoreline Master Program. Um, I thought that for this evening, we could just do a quick recap of um what was discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting on February 9th, 2022. Um, and then I, I'd like to just go over the documents that have been made available on the city website that are available right now for public review and comment. Um, and then we'll talk about next steps, so this presentation is nowhere near as long as the, the one last time. Um, okay, so quick recap, at the um February 9th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting, staff provided a refresher on the Shoreline Management Act. We talked about the Shoreline Master Program periodic update and what had occurred during that process um to date since 2019. Uh, we talked about the Department of Ecology initial determination regarding the first draft of amendments that were proposed. And we went through um a line-by-line look at what all of the proposed amendments were um in the first draft, and also identified some that would be coming uh released out with the second draft. And we talked about uh the uh planned relocation of the shoreline goals and policies to the, a new shoreline element of the comprehensive plan, and the codification of the shoreline regulations um into ANACORTES Municipal Code Title 19. Um, so just to go over the um documents that are available now for folks to take a look at, um, this is just a screenshot of the city website, we looked at it last time. Um, here is the website address, um, and then the, the new documents are under the Documents for Public Comment. Um, there are a couple of more explanatory um documents, and then the um 500 pages comes from um the, the draft SMP standalone document, um, the codified version, and then the shoreline element draft of the comp plan. So um staff did publish a notice of uh an additional public comment period. We sent that to the Anacortes American, and it was published um last week. Uh, and we also posted the notice at City Hall and the library, we sent it out to our email distribution list for folks that signed up to receive updates on the Shoreline Master Program periodic update process. Um, so we've been trying to get the word out that these documents are available, and the public comment period will run until March 9th, 2022 at 5:00 PM. So um, as I mentioned, there were two documents that were prepared to help summarize the changes, um, both in terms of text edits to the Shoreline Master Program and then the organizational changes that are being proposed. This is just um a picture of the summary document where uh if, if somebody didn't want to delve into the um, the actual 500 or 300-page document, they could take a look at this summary. It outlines chapter by chapter what the proposed changes were in the first draft, and then um if there are any changes with the second draft, so you can kind of uh get a feel for um where to look in the, in the larger document if you would like to see those amendments, amendment proposals. And then this is um a kind of a crosswalk that shows as far as the reorganization of um the policies and regulations, where those are going, where those are planned to go into the comp plan or into um the codified version and the uh corresponding um chapter and section number. And then finally, the uh, the draft Shoreline Master Program, the standalone document, document with um uh strike-through underlying showing the proposed changes. Um, for the second draft, we did try to identify in bubbles in the margins, um, trying to tie in that uh reorganization piece, so kind of just noting that, you know, this section is, is going to be in the Anacortes Municipal Code 1972-040, or, you know, trying to kind of make that connection. Um, and then we also left the um gap analysis citation for each of the changes, so that you can um see what the proposed changes and go back to the gap analysis and, and find the rationale, the reasoning for, for why the changes proposed. Um, and then we also tried to, in the margin, highlight in yellow where the um changes from the first version were, so trying to really make it easy for people to identify uh the differences between the, the two drafts. Um, and then this is the codified version, it's all the same language that's in the standalone SMP, just pulled over into this new organization and numbering um format. And then the comprehensive plan shoreline element, which is um all of the policies from the standalone document just um reorganized and, and put into the comprehensive plan. Does anybody have any questions about that? Is that clear, pretty clear about what, what's being proposed with the um reorganization and the documents that are available? Okay. This is just my, my slide trying to show visually, you know, where, what the plan for the reorganization is, so. Um, what the goals and policies going to the comp plan, development regulations, and the shoreline environment designations going into the uh Anacortes Municipal Code. Um, one of the items that I wanted to just identify because it wasn't, we didn't have the specific text at the last meeting, but um since then, we've been working with the, the Watershed Company to come up with some um clarifying language related to dock and pier repair and maintenance provisions in the Shoreline Master Program. Um, as you know, we've got quite a few single-family residential docks, uh, most of them are located in uh Flounder Bay, Skyline, and um we've been seeing more and more applications for maintenance and repair, um, and been noticing some challenges in administering those uh, the repair provisions. So we just really wanted to make it clear um what is, what is allowed in terms of maintenance and repair through um a minor repair permit. So what can you do without having to totally reconfigure your, your dock and make it smaller to match the, the more modern dimensional standards? So, so this is-
Mr. Mullino, excuse me, Mr. Mullino, I see you have a hand up? Do you have a question?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I was itching, scratching.
Oh, okay.
My apologies.
No, no worries. So we basically just added a lot more detail to make it very clear um that you, you, yes, you can replace decking with graded decking, you can replace um decking substructure, including floats, you can replace repiles, um, as long as they are steel piles, so um eliminating the creosote and, and replacing them with uh steel is, is a good environmental option. Um, and then we added a provision here talking about the existing legal non-conforming floating docks, which um the majority of these docks in Skyline are um non-conforming with regards to the size of them. Um, and so we added some language to make it clear that you can keep the existing configuration um of, so size of the dock um through a repair proposal, but um any piers or gangways that connect the floats, to floats, excuse me, must be a maximum of four feet in width for the first 30 feet waterward of the ordinary high-water mark, so that's the near-shore area, so trying to get any piers or gangways that might be wider um to, to get a little bit smaller to limit the impacts to that near-shore area. And then the gangway connecting to the floating dock must be composed of graded decking, so if you have a solid um gangway, it has to be replaced. And then this is just the proof of um aquatic use authorization if the pier extends into the uh aquatic lands managed by DNR. So we, at a staff level, we're, we hope that this will help clarify for uh both staff as we're reviewing proposals and also um dock owners in this area, um what they are uh able to do. Are there any questions on that? Nope, okay. Um, okay, well, that's the, that's really the only one I wanted to uh point out, the rest of the changes we did go over um in the meeting last time. So now I'll just get to the next steps in our process. Um, so as I mentioned, there's an additional public comment period happening right now. Um, to members of the public, please submit your comments by March 9th, 2022 at 5:00 PM, and you can send them to me, libbyb@cityofanacortes.org. And again, all of those documents that we just talked about are available on the um project website, and this is the address. Timeline moving forward, so after the public comment period ends on March 9th, um, the plan is to um collect all of the comments that we receive, um, review them, go through them, summarize them, um, and take a look at whether we need to make any revisions or changes, or staff recommends making any changes based on those comments. And we will also provide a matrix like we did for the first draft that will summarize the comments and then provide a response. Um, and we will bring all that information back to the commission, hopefully on March 23rd, depending on the um amount and detail of the comments that we receive, we may need a little bit more time to, to get through all of those, but for now, the plan is March 23rd. Um, and hopefully at that meeting, the Planning Commission would make a recommendation to City Council on the proposed amendments. Um, and we are targeting the April-May timeframe to come to City Council. Um, very likely, the council will want to hold a public hearing, so there will likely be another opportunity for public comment on this uh document um before they uh adopt it, and after adoption, um, we will transmit the uh periodic update amendments to the Department of Ecology for their final approval. And that's all I've got today. Any questions? No? Okay.
Ms. Grage, I-
Yes.
Um, not having been at the last meeting, I actually took the time to read through the documents. They, they look fairly straightforward, I liked the, that it was very clear where the proposed changes were being made and where the documents would eventually reside. Um, was I, am I correct in assuming that the Department of Ecology has indicated their inclination to approve this unless we make any dramatic changes- unless we make any dramatic changes that sort of counter their original recommendations? But they do, they do have the right to, to make a final determination?
Yes, that's correct. The, the initial determination that they made, um, is basically saying that they, uh, ecology concurs that the proposed amendments are consistent with the shoreline management act. If we make the, um, changes that, that they listed as being required or address those issues that they, they identified. Um, so if, if those changes are approved and there aren't any other major changes, then yes, ecology is saying that they believe they could approve it. Um, but we still have a little bit of process to go through, so. We shall see.
Uh, any comments or questions from the commissioners? Okay, uh, we seem to have reached the end of our agenda unless anybody has has anything that we've forgotten. We'll bring this meeting to a close and thank you, everyone, for your participation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next meeting.
Thank you, everyone.